Time to time, I will pause from time to time and ask for your questions, your observations. You see, because we sometimes underestimate the power of the church. You 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 understand? Because we sometimes think it's just our local group, and that is important, important, very, very important. But we are part of a bigger group. But even God is committed to answering two or three as we gather together in the name of Christ. So I will um, I will pause from time to time to get your feedback. So this is interactive. So please um, be prepared to share your opinion, provide some feedback. Because that's what we really want as we we engage on this this matter. So let us continue by looking at the church as a building. So part of it, one of the pictures, the church is likened to a being like a building. And in the building picture, in the building metaphor, in the imagery of the church as a building, Jesus Christ is the solid spiritual foundation. He is the solid spiritual foundation of the church. So let us just talk about um, the importance of a foundation. So let me raise that matter. Share with me, uh, you need to, those of you contributing, contributing. How important is a foundation to a building? A foundation. Maybe we can have about two or three persons share. You need to unmute your mic and you can just give us a sentence of uh, one aspect. How important is a foundation?
Very important, because if it starts wrong, it will end up wrong.
Very well. If it starts wrong, it will certainly end up wrong. Thank you, thank you very much. Any other? Um, so a faulty foundation will result in a faulty building, you know?
It will fall, fall apart and very quickly.
Pardon me?
And also fall down very quickly.
And it could fall down very quickly. All right. Any other? Thank you so much. Any other idea about a foundation? How important is it for a building?
But a faulty foundation is likely to defeat the whole purpose of building.
Yes, right. Okay, so that, so a faulty foundation is likely to defeat the whole purpose of a building. A faulty foundation can be dangerous. You know, a faulty foundation can cause the investment of people. The person who owns that house, the investment can go down the drain, down the tubes. And and some very good insights. Is there one more person who would like to tell us? Because we are saying that foundations are important. What, anyone, anyone else? So here, the foundation of a house plays, as you have said, a pivotal role in its overall stability and durability. That's exactly what you're talking about. Keeping it stable and causing that structure to last over a long time. It acts as a solid base, evenly distributing the weight of the structure above and providing crucial support. This structural support ensures the integrity and longevity of the building. The integrity means that it will not be cracking. The walls will not be cracking and the floor will not be moving and, you know, uh, and so forth. Preventing uneven settling and potential damage. Beyond just bearing weight, a well-constructed house foundation also serves as a barrier against moisture and soil conditions that can be detrimental to the home structure. So a well-constructed foundation would mean that water wouldn't come seeping up from underneath, from the floor. Because that moisture can damage your tiles. That moisture can damage your flooring and create a lot of expense if it has to be corrected. Okay, so moreover, in cold climate, cold climates, the house foundation significantly contributes to the energy efficiency and comfort of the home, because it would mean this.
I'm not hearing nothing.
You're not hearing me? You're not hearing me?
I am, I am.
Okay, all right, good, thank you so much. Maybe is it, maybe the mic is muted, um, something was muted or or you need to check his volume. In essence, the foundation is not just a literal base of a home. It is a fundamental component that impacts every aspect of the building. Safety, efficiency, habitability, so that we can live in that house or in that building. And thus is, and that is what a foundation is for. So we see how important. So in summary, there are four reasons for a foundation. It is supporting the building. And I'm sure we are moving this slides along, this inside slideshow. Eh, it's supporting the building. And that is key. It's resistance to natural calamity. It can keep, based upon where it is constructed, to keep moisture out, moisture that is not needed. It keeps it from rising from the, from the uh, the floor, up into the floor, flowing. And to make living sustainable, uh, depending upon the regions where, you know? So I I want to look at, as we are looking at the topic, um, 1 Corinthians, chapter three. And so, so that is the the basis of this much of what we are talking about today. 1 Corinthians, chapter three. Having said what we said, uh, I wonder, let me pause. Are there any observations, any questions, um, based upon what we have said in terms of the different pictures um, of the church or any such matter? And and Jesus Christ being the solid, and we say spiritual foundation. Because, you know, um, he is, and spiritual does not uh, in any way, uh, mean it is less. Because he is that spiritual foundation that is unshakable, you know? And and this is what we're coming out to the text. So in 1 Corinthians, where the passage is, where it's talking about Jesus as the foundation. And it will also be talking about our role, my role in this, in the church, in the body. My role in the building, the spiritual building. It's a spiritual building, it's a spiritual foundation, and it's a spiritual building. And these spiritual things are real, they are not imaginary, they are real. All right, so um, in a brief overview, you see a map of Corinth. All right, so if you look on that map, Corinth is southwest of Athens. It is southeast of Italy. Italy looks like that boot, like our shoes, a boot out in the sea, in the Mediterranean. All right, it is west of Asia Minor, places like Ephesus and so forth. So that is where, um, and and so you will pick up in, in Acts chapter, Acts chapter eighteen, how that church was started. All right, so it was a major religious center. It was a major economic center. It was influenced, a lot of, a lot of sailors used to go there. If you see it, it's an island with a big harbor. It's a, it was a big harbor and and so a lot of commercial activities. It was influenced by Athens that was up there to the northeast of it. All right, and so uh, so this was a very important center and a very corrupt and immoral place as well. Paul spent eighteen months in Corinth. And so, and it was the church at Corinth, the body of Christ, uh, was established there. And he spent eighteen months there. It was established on his second missionary journey. All right, second missionary journey, uh, when Paul went out. And the church at Corinth, uh, was addressed, the epistle was addressed to believers. So, so the, so the people who were, this letter was written to, inspired of God, they were believers. So they were coming up from different backgrounds in a very corrupt and immoral society. Uh, and extremely immoral. And um, but Paul is calling them saints. They didn't have to die and then wait for the Roman Catholic Church to declare them as saints. They were saints from the point at which they trusted Christ as Lord and Savior. And we will see that though they were saints, they were not always living like saints. They were not living up to who they were. And so Paul is writing to challenge them to be and to live who God had called them out of the world to be. So one of the major themes in this whole episode of 1 Thessalonians, it is like seeing every part of life through the gospel. The gospel brings about, should bring about a change in all of our lives. Our perspective, how we live, how we should live, how we should interact with each other. All right, so we are continuing just briefly, just a brief overview of um, uh, this particular book of 1 Corinthians. And as after we have finished with this, I want to take some questions, because then we will kind of go into some of how it applies. Um, the first epistle of uh, of Saint Paul to the Corinthians can be divided into about five parts, five parts. The first major section, um, one to three is dealing with uh, divisions in the church, schisms. The church, you know, people are, they are factions, right? Um, some were saying that they were of Peter, some were saying they were of Apollo's, some of Paul, and some were saying they were of Jesus. So these leaders were very influential in the church. Paul was the one who God used to start, start the church, you know? And as we said, the second missionary journey in Acts eighteen. Then Peter came along and helped strengthen the church. And especially, I suppose, the Jewish believers loved Peter, because you know, he was a strong Jewish person too. Then Apollo's was very eloquent speaker. Um, and he, the Bible tells us that he was very strong in the things of of God, and he was discipled. Um, and they taught, Aquila and Priscilla taught him some of the things that he didn't know. Because you only knew about the baptism of John and they taught him. But he was eloquent. So some of the people who like Greek philosophy and like um, eloquence, they were saying, yeah, Apollo's is our champion. And then there were some people say, well, Jesus is our champion. And so the church was divided um, in in that, so so these with with that. So we'll be, we will be addressing that in a while. There was sexual immorality. And remember, uh, why some of the believers. Okay, so here it is. People who basically, they came out of the society and they are now part of the body of Christ. This very powerful spiritual entity, their lives were changed, were supposed to be changed. And some of them were engaged in sexual immorality. Gross sexual immorality in one case of one of the men who was living with his father's wife. And the apostle Paul had to say, wait, wait, listen, not even among some unsaved people. Would you find people practicing that? How come among, in your community that is redeemed, there is this thing here? He says, no, this is intolerable. And so you have, that is one problem. A second problem was, a second problem was, some people were not participating in the immorality. But they knew about it and they did nothing about it. They were indifferent, they were indifferent. And Paul is saying, listen, that's wrong. Even though you're not, even though you are not practicing immorality, that person has to be dealt with, that person needs to be disciplined. Ah, so because that is an anomaly. That should not be happening among God's people. And if it happens, disciplinary action is absolutely necessary. Actually, Paul says that that person needs to be, as it were, uh, there's a strong, strong statement, it's almost as though he needs to be taken out from among you so that his flesh could be destroyed, um, and so forth. And he would see that later on, the people who were tolerant of that um, immoral behavior, they changed their attitude based upon the word of God and Paul's exhortation to them. And then some of them were, he was totally ostracized. And Paul said, okay, he has repented now because the behavior was sanctioned and the person had a change of behavior. Paul says, since he has repented, you need now to receive him and don't continue um, leaving him out, because we don't want to give Satan an opportunity. We'll pick that up in the second epistle of Saint Paul to the Corinthians. Right, so you have that whole matter. Again, that's why I pointed out that these were believers who, they are, they allow this immorality. And if they didn't treat with it, as it is said, a little leaven will leaven the whole lot. You put a little yeast in the flour and it affects the whole batch of flour. And so what would have happened is that the church would become more and more immoral if they didn't correct the problem. But thankfully, the problem was corrected. Uh, and that is explained in the second epistle. Then there's another section that's dealing with food offered to idols. Um, and um, and how do Jews and Gentiles uh, relate? So for the Jewish believers, they said, we are not eating any food that was offered, meat offered at the temple to idols. So the people offer the meat at the temple, take it home, and then they would share it. And some of the people who would be eating it will be uh, some of the believers. But the Jewish people said, we are not eating any such meat. But the Gentile believers basically say, well, we are eating the meat, we are blessing it, and we are eating it. Well, let me, let me just get a little more, uh, not just eating it, we are naming it, naming the meat offered to idols, because there's only one God, you know? And and um, the, the people who think that they're offering it to idols, those idols are not truly real. All right, so they're saying we are eating it. What Paul is saying is, um, nothing is wrong with eating the meat offered to idols. But if it will pose a problem for other believers, avoid eating the meat. Because if it will be like a stumbling block in their way, right? Don't eat the meat, because in eating the meat, it might offend some believers and might contribute to their spiritual destabilization. So you don't want a brother or sister who is stable to be confused in their mind and wondering, how we can eat the meat of the demons or whatever. So Paul said, in that case, avoid doing something that will cause a brother or a sister to stumble. Because you want your brother or sister to be strong. So I would say what what might have happened is, if, if there is meat offered to idols rather than eat it in their presence, um, what you can do is to take the meat home, bless it, and eat it at home, right? So they won't stumble. But the point is, you're not doing anything that will cause your brother or sister to stumble. All right, but people could have eaten that meat, Gentiles in particular. Then there's the issue of this orderly, weekly worship services. Some people will come into church and um, and some of them might have ended up taking their big sumptuous meal to church. Just imagining it, this is not necessarily a, a banquet necessarily, but they're coming to church and they come with a whole lot of food. And some Christians didn't have any food and the people not sharing. And Paul says, listen, that is not right. If you are hungry, eat at home before you come to church. Or wait until you come after church and you eat. The church service is to be one that is orderly, because God is a God of order, you know? So you have that whole, he's talking about, you need to have orderly worship. And then too, he's dealing with the matter of speaking in tongues. Sometimes several people want to talk and Paul says, no, um, you can all speak in tongues individually, right? However, if you're speaking loud, there should be an interpreter. And he's saying, you know what I mean? So uh, he's giving them guidelines, guidelines. And he say, okay, people can't see the, he say that the spirit of the prophet is subject to the prophet. So he's kind of putting things in order, because he's saying your witness should be important for the unsafe people. Uh, when they come in, they should be convicted and not thinking that there's confusion in the church. And he says, let everything be done decently and in order. And then the fifth um, matter that is dealt with, a big matter that is dealt with, is the resurrection. The bodily resurrection of Jesus Christ, as you can see in the, oh, in the slide. So there were some Christians, even in the very first century, who were denying the resurrection of Jesus Christ. And the apostle Paul said to them, if it is, if we are proclaiming that Jesus Christ rose from the dead, how come some of you are saying that there is no resurrection from the dead? Now, that was a day before the whole emergence of science, but some of them were denying it. And Paul says, listen, what you are saying, you don't understand the implications. If you deny the resurrection, you need to recognize that you are still in your sins and your faith is empty, because the bodily resurrection of Christ is very important in uh, that God raised Christ who died for sins. God raised him from the dead. And so uh, God accepted him, saying, you know what? This is really the Messiah. And so our faith has meaning because of the bodily resurrection of Christ. Not only that, but Jesus Christ is the first fruit. He was raised from the dead and all those who believe in him. The time will come, those who die in him will be raised first and have new bodies. Those who are alive will be changed, this mortal will put on immortality. Ah, you see what's happening there? And all of that is because God raised Jesus physically from the dead. All right, let me stop there and get your feedback, maybe your comments, your questions, if you want a clarification. As we, what we are doing is, we just kind of engaged in a bit of a summary. Anything that was said earlier, you are free to raise a question on it, as I will try to answer. And if I cannot answer it, your pastor will be able to answer it, I am sure about that. All right, so please, we, this is interactive. So, so um, you could unmute your mic if you have a question or comment, it's not just a question, but a comment or some clarification. This is Bible study. Hello? Are you there?
My brothers and sisters, let's take part.
Go ahead, you have a question?
Just encouraging people to take part.
Go ahead.
Just encouraging my brothers and sisters to take part.
Okay, good, thank you so much. Yes, folks. Any observation, it doesn't have, it could be a question, something you want me to kind of go over, something I said maybe I ran over too quickly. All right, um.
Dr. Oliver?
Yes, sir. That's Rev.
Explain, explain for us again, how one becomes a saint, even with with imperfect character and practices?
All right, that, that's, uh, thank you very much, Rev, uh, for that, because that is a very important question in, in all that we do. So I want us to, if you have your Bibles, uh, I want you to turn to 1 Corinthians. So we would, we would see it. Because our, we are, and and you know, one of the blessings of the, the um, the denomination is, is called, is called um, Open Bible. And what a blessing that is, because it is in an open Bible that we are able to see what God is saying. All right, so uh, so, 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 so 1 Corinthians, so I will, I will answer that question by, we'll be looking at 1 Corinthians, chapter one. Chapter one. Could we have somebody read for us? Um, 1 Corinthians, chapter one, verse one, and verse one to three. All right, it doesn't matter what translation you read, most of these translations will be pretty accurate. So someone just read um, from 1 Corinthians, chapter one, verse one to three. So we will see it and then we will try to explain it. All right. Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Paul called to be an apostle of Jesus Christ through the will of God and Thessalonese, our brother, to the church of God, which is at Corinth, to those who are sanctified in Christ Jesus. Called to be saints, with all who in every place call on the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord, both theirs and ours. Grace to you and peace from God, our Father, and the Lord Jesus Christ.
Okay, thank you very much, Pastor. So here you're saying, Paul himself, he's saying that he is called by God, by the will of God, and Paul was called to be an apostle. And that is one reason he was able, he was sent and one, and he uh, be an apostle of Jesus Christ. And he's talking about Thessalonese who was part of the, the team. And he sent his writing to the church of God that is in Corinth, that's what we said, right? To those who are sanctified. So these are people who were separated, all right, separated from the world. See, that's the idea. God had sanctified them through the blood of Jesus, eh? The blood of Jesus took away, uh, cleansed them from sins. So they are sanctified through Jesus. And he said, what called to be saints? And together with all those in every place. So those who are Corinth, who are trusted Christ, they are called to be saints as well as those who were up at Philippi before, because the church that was founded at Philippi, uh, that was before. And those who were in places like Ephesus and other places, you know, before and Antioch and so on. So those who are called to be saints. So how one became a saint, we became a saint, is by repenting of one's sins, trusting in Jesus Christ, in his death on the cross, that God raised him from the dead, asking Jesus to come into the life. And then God starts that process of sanctification. So saints are not perfect persons, but they are saints from that point on. You see? And so we are called, we have this calling. And so we are called, we have this calling and now we've got to live like that. We've got to live out being saints. So God makes us, God sanctifies us. We are to, we are set apart for God's purposes, for God's mission. We are destined for heaven. You know, and the God who started his work in us has the ability to complete the work. As it says in Philippians, he who has started a good work in you will be able to complete that good work. And we, we see that also in places like First Peter, where we are told of all the great things that he has done for us and Second Peter, chapter one, you know? So our sainthood, because saint means holy ones, all right? He has made us holy ones by his grace. That is why we also included verse, verse three, grace to you and peace. So at one time, there was hostility because our sins caused us to be hostile to God. But because we have accepted Christ, God has placed upon Christ our sins that caused there to be this great chasm. Ah, so, and Paul's saying, grace to you and peace from God the Father. According to Ephesians, that we are saved by grace through faith. Not of works, lest anyone should boast. So we're gonna see in a while that we have a responsibility to work. But we are not working to be saved. We are working because we are saved and God is going to be asking us to build upon the foundation of Jesus Christ. So all that we do, we have this sense that God is the one who has saved us. He has sanctified us, we are going to be glorified because he has started a process that is amazing. That he has taken us from wherever we were and he has brought us into his church. And even if we did not reach, did not do certain types of things. He saved us from that as well, you know? It is just amazing. Pastor, was that helpful or I can?
It was, sir. Thank you.
Okay, God bless you. Maybe there's anybody else who want to answer, ask a question on any other things that I just pointed out? I'm calling Melanie, she was just trying to pitch me, tell her I'm in a session. Yes. All right. Okay. So, so yes. So folks, do you see? So it means that you, everyone who has believed, God has made us holy ones. In this sense, holy ones does not mean perfect ones. You, 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 you see, it's not as it were perfect that we are faultless in that sense. But because of the work that Christ has done, he has made you, huh? Declared you forgiven. As Romans chapter eight says, there is therefore now what? No condemnation to those who are in Christ Jesus. Oh, is that something? The Holy God has said of, of you and everyone who is trusted in Christ, not guilty. And he has declared you a saint and, and he wants you to mature as a saint, you understand, to grow into maturity. All right? All right, so, so, okay. So in the, in the book of First Corinthians, the church is a community of people centered around Jesus. And we are going to be seeing in chapter three, that a part of it is, the church is not a popularity contest. It is not a popularity contest. So let me just read what's going on here in chapter three, from verse one to verse fifteen for us. So if you have chapter three, we, we will look at it. So what we try to do is to kind of take a big picture approach of what's going on in the entire book. All right, and now we are going to be focusing in today's proceedings, lesson on chapter three, verse one to fifteen. Paul says, but I brothers could not address you as spiritual people, but as people of the flesh, as infants in Christ. All right? I fed you with milk, not with solid food, for you were not ready for it. And even now you are not yet ready. For you are still of the flesh, for while there is jealousy and strife among you. Are you not of the flesh and behaving only in a human way? For when one says, I follow Paul, and another, I follow Apollos, are you not being merely human? What then is Apollos? What is Paul? Servants through whom you believed, as the Lord assigned to each. I planted, Apollos watered, but God gave the growth. As the King James says, God gave the increase, eh? Verse seven. So neither he who plants or he who waters is anything, but only God who gives the growth. He who plants and he who waters are one. And each will receive his wages according to his labor. For we are God's fellow workers. You are God's field. God's building, notice what he's saying here? These are some metaphors that he's using. He said, we, verse nine, for we are God's fellow workers. Look at what that is saying to us, we'll come back to that in a while. God not only brought us into his kingdom, but he says that we have to work with him. What an honor. And he says that we are God's field. All right, God's building. Verse eleven, verse ten. According to the grace of God given to me. And you know, as Paul is using the first person there, singular. Like a skillful master builder, I laid a foundation. And someone else is building upon it. Let each one take care how he builds upon it. For no one can lay a foundation other than that which is laid, which is Christ Jesus. Now, if anyone builds on the foundation with gold, silver, precious stones, would he ostrer? Each one's work will become manifest, for the day will disclose it. Because it will be revealed by fire and the fire will test what sort of work each one has done. If the work that anyone has built on the foundation survives, he will receive a reward. If anyone's work is burned up, he will suffer loss. Though he himself will be saved, but only as through fire, verse one to fifteen. All right, so let us continue. All right, so that is the text that we are looking at. And we're saying that what he's saying, a central idea in all of this is that the church is a community of people centered around Jesus. So there's a sense in which it is founded on the foundation of Jesus. And it is centered around Jesus, not around Apollos, or ultimately around the Apostle Paul or the Apostle Peter, you know? But centered around Jesus and found, founded, meaning on the foundation of Jesus. So it is not a popularity contest. All right, so what we are seeing here is that there's a diagnosis, the, the slide. There's a diagnosis and two pictures, two metaphors, right, in chapter three. Here is a spiritual diagnosis. You, you know, sometimes people might be sick and you might do certain tests. And the test could reveal, okay, this is what is wrong. If there's an accurate diagnosis of the condition, the medical practitioner, the doctor can then say, okay, to treat this matter, you will need maybe antibiotics. Seven days of antibiotics, one tablet, twice a day after, after breakfast. And before you go to bed, whatever it is, you know? Because they know what the condition is, they have done a diagnosis. Or sometimes cars, you know, these electronic cars on electronic components. Sometimes you go to some, if you have a certain type of car vehicle, you don't just, they put it up on a machine. And the machine could tell you, could tell the mechanic what is wrong with it, you know, a diagnostic. You know, or certain tests. So Paul engages in spiritual diagnosis of the Corinthian congregation. You know, so that is what we have as he, he, he is beginning there in verse one to three. So I want to read it again. He said, but I, brothers, I could not address you as spiritual people. Huh? I could not address you as people who are spiritually mature. Pneumatic, you know, spiritual people. But as people of the sacs, the flesh, as the, the Greek word used, as infants. And you know what? The, the Hebrew, the, the Greek noun there, masculine plural noun is napioi. Napioi, and what is that sound like in English? Napkins, right? As babes, that is how the King James Version translated it. You are infants, you are still in napkins. Now, these are adults, people, some of them thought that they were so wise because they are so close to Athens. And they've, you know, and so forth. But Paul says, listen, you are not spiritually mature, you are saints, yes, he said already, he said that they were saints. But he said, you're not behaving as mature saints. He said, I could not even address you as spiritual people, but I had to address you as freshly people. Infants, infants in Christ. He said, because you are infants in Christ, verse two, I fed you with milk. I could not give you meat, I couldn't give you chicken, I couldn't give you beef, eh? I had to give you milk. For you were not ready for the solid food. You couldn't eat any yellow yam and boiled green banana. And you couldn't have any crushed planting because you couldn't deal with that type of heavy thing. You know, he's saying to them, you, there is a problem. He says, for you are still in the flesh, he's not talking about the physical flesh now, the body. That is flesh, yes. But in this case, he's talking about, you are still operating in a immature manner. This is, he's engaged with a, in a spiritual diagnosis, he's on a diagnostic test. Spiritually, if somebody was saying, but Paul, you're judging them. Well, remember, Paul has spiritual insight. As somebody said, he was called to be an apostle of Jesus Christ. Things are not right in the church and he wants to get the things that are not right, correct. So he has the authority to make a value judgment. And his spiritual diagnosis is true. And he's gonna point to evidence, it's gonna be, his diagnosis is evidence based. So here is what, what is the evidence? Look at verse three. For you are still in the flesh, for while there is jealousy and strife among you. Are you not in the flesh and behaving only in a human manner? Do you see that? Look at that. Paul says, somebody is asking me, what? Why am I able to make this assessment, this diagnosis? He says, look at it, among you, you have jealousy and you have strife. Huh? So, look at this, so what he's saying is he's basically saying, we're seeing that the church at Corinth was showing signs of spiritual immaturity. And they thought they were spiritual adults, they thought they were spiritual adults. So they are saints, but based upon their, how they were relating to each other. He says, you are saints, but you are operating as immature saints. Right, that's what he's saying to them, jealousy, what is jealousy? Let's look at the definition, we have it on this slide. Jealousy is a feeling of unhappiness and anger because someone has something or someone and you want it, that you want. So somebody has something or has someone and you want what they have. It's like kind of envy, kind of related to that. So you're feeling jealous about that. He says jealousy is among you, so that is a sign of your immaturity. And he said strife, you can see it on the, on, on the PowerPoint, strife, what is it? Angry? Angry or bitter disagreement over fundamental issues. So he was saying that there's a lot of conflict among them. Because remember, and he's gonna point it out. For when one says, I follow Paul, or another, I follow Apollos. And in earlier, someone saying, I am of Peter, you know? He's saying, are you not operating as mere human beings? You're not showing that there is a spiritual change, that's a spiritual life in you. You're not showing, you're not showing that type of evidence. You see? So he's saying, so, so sometimes people say, okay, don't judge. But we can assess and engage in a diagnosis based upon what we are seeing. You know, but we should be careful in, in what we do, all right? So you have that. And let me, let me point out two pictures or two metaphors that are used in verse nine. We, we, we want to see that. Verse nine, we refer to it, for we are God's fellow workers. You are God's field, God's building. So you have two metaphors or pictures, you know? And is there graphic, for instance? So what he's saying, he's saying that we are workers together with God. That is an agricultural metaphor, an agricultural picture. So you can see us working, so God is working and we are working. And what is God working doing? God is working in sustaining the world, God is working in redeeming the lost people who, you know? God is working in helping us to be mature spiritually, to grow, to become more like Christ. He's working in our families, he's working to help us to understand him better. And we are working with God, look what God has done. At one point, we used to work against God, we didn't care, I mean, not everybody in the same way. But what I mean is, the Bible says that we really did not want to see God. Sometimes if we were seeking God, thank God for the family we were raised in and, and so forth, you know? But sometimes we are still, we're going our own ways, the flesh wants to take us in a new direction, in another direction against God. But we are able to submit ourselves, you know? But now we are working with God. With God to do God's work in that agricultural metaphor. So what is happening is, God sovereignly designed that the redeemed, we are redeemed, you are redeemed, once you trust in Christ. Work with him to accomplish his mission. A, so a failure to grasp the role of God in, is making our role effective. So basically, uh, if we fail to grasp that God is working in us and with us, and he wants us to work with him, we are making a mistake. If God does not give the increase, each of us achieves nothing. What is the point? The point is that we can't just look at our own gifts. We will be effective if God blesses our endeavor. You know, so even though we we might be well prepared and so forth, it's not just what we do. We need to be well prepared and we need all of that. But it is God who gives the increase. So we need to recognize that whatever we do, we need God's help if we will be successful at the, at the level of spiritual impact. All right, so, so it's two things we have seen so far. In the first, in the first diagnosis, we want to see that God wants us to exhibit signs of spiritual maturity. God wants you, God wants me. He wants the entire body of Christ in every local church, including Twidnum Park. He wants you to show signs, evidence of being spiritually mature. All right. So that means no partisan attitude where I am a Paul, I am a Peter, I am no, or no carnal or fleshly or unspiritual competition. So we are not fighting against ourselves and trying to show ourselves. We do our best and we do that as we build on the foundation of Christ. So that was the, that was the part there, dealing with the diagnosis. And then we also see the second issue is that we have to be workers with God, the sovereign God. God can say, let me do it myself, I could do this whole thing. I call the world into being. I am Almighty God, but God said, I choose to work with people. So you know, as has been said, we are God's hands and we are, we are God's mouthpieces and so forth. So what God is saying, you have an important role to play. You have a work to do, that in a sense, nobody can do that work as good as you. And God is counting upon you to work with him and with the church to get that work that he has uh earmarked for you to do. So we see another picture. So we saw an agricultural uh picture or metaphor, then we see an architectural metaphor. I'm called, uh, uh, we see the end of verse nine. So he said, you are God's field, you are, you know, we are God's workers, fellow workers. You are God's field, you are God's building. And would you believe you are God's building? We are seeing that also in verse eleven, there's a reference to that same thing, verse eleven. Um. So I laid a foundation as a, like a, a skilled master builder. I laid a foundation and someone else is building upon it. What is used there is the word architecton. You can see it on this, on the, um, you can see it on the slide. What does architecton sound like? Doesn't it sound like architect? Yes, Paul said, he was like a skilled architect, a skilled builder. And so you got, you got the idea. Paul says that he was like a skilled builder, but, and he built a foundation, and we'll see it in a while. That was, he, he, by God's grace, God had him to start the church at Corinth. But he said that church was founded upon verse eleven, verse eleven. For no one can lay a foundation other than that which is laid, which is Christ Jesus. Ultimately, the ultimate foundation of the church is Jesus Christ. All right. So let me pause there and I hope, um, because I might have to ask some questions, because if you understand, I can ask you some questions, but I prefer if you would ask me questions first and so forth. So please, um, on YouTube mic and pastor, you're gonna let me know how we're doing with time and and so forth. Okay, so having said all that I said, the, the diagnosis of the Corinthian condition, as well as the two pictures, the agricultural picture metaphor and the architectural metaphor. I, I, I want, uh, if you need any clarification, if you wanna ask a question, if you wanna make an observation, please. This is how we, this is how we teach. This is a, um, I welcome your questions, which can help all of us and even me to clarify.
Yeah, Doc, not again. Um, can you elaborate some more on the architectural metaphor?
All right. Thank you so much for that question. So, okay, so you have your Bibles. So, um, so it's coming from, we're looking at verse nine. So he's talking about, okay. So I read in the whole verse, because in that verse nine of chapter three, he says, for we, talking about the church together, we are God's fellow workers. He's using the first person plural, we, all of us, the whole body. All right. He's talking about Corinth and all the other churches. We are God's fellow workers. And in our day, it will include Twidnum Park, we all together are God's fellow workers. You are God's field, right? So he's saying, so that is a, that is the um agricultural metaphor. You know, talking about you are God's field. It's almost as though God is sowing among you, God is building you, and he says, you are God's building. All right. You are God's building. So he's talking about that building, all right? And then he talks about the, when he comes on to verse, verse ten, according to the grace of God. Now, notice what happened here. Paul is doing his work, but he said, I am only doing it because of the grace of God. Because remember, Paul was hostile to the church and seeked, seeking to destroy the church, but God turned his life around on the Damascus Road. Uh, it is by grace, Paul has nothing, God has given him a portfolio, but it's not because of Paul himself, it's because of the grace of God. So he said, according to the grace of God given to me. And I suppose that's why I told you, I like how the topic that was given to me to speak on today for our Bible study for the month is how my role in it, my role in it. So it's like everybody could say, okay, what is my role in the church? So Paul says, according to the grace given to me, like a skilled master builder. That is where they got the word architecton from. And I kind of put it in there, in the, in the slide, you can see it there, as a Greek. But, but it basically, it's referring to architect. Paul, God has given him that role as an expert builder. So the architect is able to draw up some plans, huh? And say, okay, this is it, based upon the, the land and whatever, based upon what you want to get done for the house. Or if you're putting up a multi-story building with offices, the architect, you know, uh, can help you to, to put that, does a draw. Paul says, he's an expert builder. So, um, so as an apostle, Paul had that role as an expert builder. And he was, he's talking about, um, he laid a foundation, the foundation that he laid, that God helped him to lay, was establishing the church in the geographical location of Corinth. You see? So this is a, he's speaking at a spiritual level now, you know? So a church was started at Corinth that was so immoral and so forth. And God used Paul to establish that church. But that church that was founded by Paul was built on the foundation, as he said in verse eleven, for no one can lay a foundation other than that which is laid, Jesus Christ. Jesus Christ is saying is the ultimate foundation. I hope I have answered that question, which is a very good question. So as I, Paul understood what God wanted to do. He is redeeming people, taking people, even if they were immoral. He, he pulls them in and he makes the immoral moral. Sometimes they're not perfect, but he's working in their lives, working in their lives, causing us to recognize that we were sinners and causing us to say, you know what? I like that song, I am a sinner saved by grace. We realize that we could live by the power of God. And though, and we are supposed to now manifest according to Galatians six, the fruit of the spirit in our lives, you know? So there's a change, there's a transformation. And as Romans twelve says, that we are not to let the world squeeze us into its mold, but there's a change taking place in individual lives, people are at different stages and, you know, of growth. But God, all, all, he wants everyone to grow, to be more and more like Jesus Christ. Have I, have I, um, explained a little bit more on that? The architect, um, picture?
Yes, Doc, thanks.
Okay.
All right. We'll take one more question. Before we ask our sister Andrea to close in prayer for us. Any other question? All right. Nobody else has a question? All right. Mr. Andrea, hearing me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you close in prayer for us, please? Dr. Oliver, thanks again for making yourself available to us, sir.
Sure. And pastor, the PowerPoint can be shared and we'll continue from here next, next week, God willing.
Okay, good. All right. Sorry, Andrea, go ahead.
Okay. Most righteous and heavenly Father, we just wanna thank you again for this wonderful opportunity and another night of inspiring Bible study, Lord, where you have opened our minds and our thoughts so that we can feed on your word. We thank you for our presenter, Dr. Oliver, for spending the time to prepare and come to bring clarity, the things that we were not so clear about. We pray, Lord, that you'll continue to bless him, you'll continue to open his mind, you continue to give him words of wisdom to share with people at, from day to day. Lord, we just pray that you'll continue to be with us, keep us safe through this uncertain time of a hurricane coming to our land. But Lord, we know that you are the God of the impossible, you are our protector, you are our shield. And you know that whatever will be done in the next couple of hours will be according to your will and according to your will. Lord, we pray for those who are fearful at this time, that you will give them comfort, you will give them peace. They, let them understand that you are God and you are in control. And we just pray, Lord, that you'll just give us peace, rest and comfort during this difficult time. Lord, we thank you for everything that you will do and continue to do for us for Christ's sake. Amen.
Amen.
Amen.